I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pillar, would you please read this in the prayer?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to get together tonight to go over the business at hand for the city of Hazen. We pray that you watch over not only our city, but the country in general over the course of the next week that that we can see, we can see some sense to everything that's going on and that you can see that there's, there's a method to the madness. And we just pray that you would be with everybody as we go through this week.
Jared, are you online?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, reading of the minutes from October nineteenth, approval, please.
Motion to approve and suspend the reading.
Motion by Wolf. Second, second by Stern, discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye. Same side, proposed. Okay, minutes approved. Approve of the agenda, please, any changes or additions to the agenda.
Motion to approve and suspend.
Motion by Act, approve the agenda. Second. And second by Pillar. Discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side. Alright, the agenda is set. Five A, engineers report, Jared, you're up to back.
Okay, welcome everybody, good evening. I don't have much again, um, I'll just speak to what I got here, exhibition of state. Recall William Sterling Company has some corrective work to do up in that area, Beck's Hole will be in town tomorrow. What they're gonna do is adjust the manhole down that are sticking up, so they'll cut those out, lower them, adjust them, and then fill in all the low suction areas of asphalt, asphalt. So they're only doing asphalt, leveling course in the bad areas, they're not overlaying the whole street. You recall, we got the quote from them to overlay the whole street and it was pretty high number, about sixty grand. So, this is what they're doing tomorrow. Their bid is somewhere around seventeen, eighteen thousand bucks. The only item that can go up or down slightly is that they're actually maybe ranking in forty-five tons of asphalt to fix all the low spots, it should be enough, but if it's not, it could go over just a little bit. Kind of a best guess based on what's out there, where you kind of have three inches deep of this spot, or six inches deep in this spot. All in all, I hope we keep it under twenty thousand dollars, so if they need another half a truck load or whatever it is, get it fixed, they're just gonna have to do what they do, but I told them not to go over that twenty. So, they understand that if there's anything outside of that, you know, you guys will have to be involved or make a decision. John will be there in the morning to get it started, make sure they know exactly what to do and then he'll probably leave. He's not, he's busy on a DOT job for, for Bismarck, um, so he'll coordinate and then I guess, uh, probably have to leave town. It should be done tomorrow.
Is it okay if we have Dave kind of over on there tomorrow, that's? Do, or do they even need anybody there? For the city?
You know, I, I'm, I'm sure if they don't already have it, make sure they have the answer. Uh, let's see here, otherwise, uh, not much else. Good. Nice weather, everybody's trying to get stuff flattened up, wrapped up here. Uh, we did any one call for locate request up on the north side of town, that ticket has not cleared yet. So we won't, uh, we haven't done the, um, extra topo work up around the water tank site. We, we needed that to figure out if we could use an existing easement that's up there or raise a new one. So that's not done. Really, that whole, that whole project is kind of just, still, I understand, so we have prairie dog money. Maybe at some point, you know, let's start to look if we want to proceed or not, but at this point, I'm, I'm not sensing if you guys wanna go at risk forward, you know, hoping that, you know, the prairie dog comes. But if that, if you get to that point, or if you're ready to talk about that, we definitely like to, but I understand the financial situation. Um, Monty just mentioned to me that, uh, we should make sure that we look at those wells up there too. And as a part of all this stuff, uh, get those plugged and abandoned, or at least have a conversation and see if you guys want to plug and abandon those, as long as we get sixty percent grant, get all that work done. Uh, so that'll be a part of the conversation down the road, we'll talk about the skated system or what we're gotten from that building, we're doing with those wells, so I've added that to my list, make sure we talk about that. Usually not that big a deal, uh, unless of course, you know, we're in, like, asbestos or something like that, but, um.
And you're talking about our, our water plant?
Well, I was talking about it, just a little compost, the little, the, the wells that are outside the water.
Okay, yeah.
We can, sometimes we're into flooring or ceiling tiles or something that has some asbestos down. That's the only thing I can think of, it might be a little bit of a curve ball, but I'll, I'll make sure and get up there and look through the data so that we can, you know, decide if we, if it's a, a non-issue or if there's something we gotta do, but it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
Um, so freezing service lines, again, we're going through the winter at this, so I don't know. You normally start giving those guys a break on the water, but, you know, temperature should be starting to get cold pretty quick, yeah. Um, you should probably just follow their normal procedures for the winter. Flowers will be up to do that work in the spring. Otherwise, uh, guys, I don't have really anything else. Monty and I have been just doing a few little miscellaneous, um, questionnaires in health department and, you know, as, as things come up, we kind of just take care of them, but nothing really to report, I guess.
Okay. Alright, appreciate it, Jared, thank you.
I'm gonna just pick on the calls for about fifteen, twenty minutes, if, uh, you know, probably a little before six.
No problem, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Six A, uh, traffic control signals. Casey, more to discuss there? I guess I really don't know that much more about it than what I said prior, but, yeah.
And I can let you know that I did talk to Jim about it, they have had no calls out there that they've been involved with as far as near misses or accidents, so.
Okay. Yeah, I, I had one citizen call me and, uh, she talked about, uh, and she lives, she lives actually around the corner, closer than Yogi Bear Park back there, but, um, she thought it was a valid situation, she, you know, she said that when she read the minutes for our last meeting, she said that someone mentioned, oh, you don't see much traffic out there. Well, if you don't live out there, you're probably not going to, but if you live out there, drive by, you can see quite a bit more according to this lady. And she thought some sort of, um, signage to slow traffic down would be great, but she actually recommended we talk to Dollar General to see if they had something where, you know, if you made people go in and out of certain directions in their, their parking, their parking lot. You know, if they came out the highway and they had to enter the north side of the parking lot, it might be.
You know, I do, I, I do know, and I, I can't log for the south driveway, but you know, I have done that jury. And the north driveway, if I recall, has in and out arrows. It's very, the paint didn't last very long when they're striking, when they were striking, because you can't see that. I'm, I'm pretty sure there's an arrow there, if I recall.
There is.
But there's not one on the south, no.
Just good to know, I guess, I don't know if there's something we wanna, if we wanna do something here or not, or, or get ahold of Dollar General and see if they have any signs they would put up, or even if, when they come out of their parking lot, they had a yield or a stop sign coming out of their own parking lot, before they entered a highway drive.
I do like the recommendation of going in.
The north side.
Yeah, and coming out the other way, you know, just to kind of relieve some of traffic, not that I see many, but, you know.
So they, again, the concern was coming off of Highway two hundred and, and going directly to the south entrance to the parking lot? Just cutting right across that, and, and potentially cutting somebody off that's coming up? The street there, the birch?
On, on, yeah.
Someone coming down, coming down, it's like birch.
Yeah.
They would turn and.
They would go right, pat, right, right, cut them right in, from, from Highway two hundred.
I could see that happening because I, you know, I'm in both directions. There's, yeah, there's really no flow of traffic out there too. Outside of the common courteous flow of traffic too. I'm.
Well, we, I, you know, if nothing else, maybe we could just talk to Jim and have the other options, just watch it work carefully and see if they notice any, any sort of, uh, bottleneck at any spot, or, you know, not had, maybe there have been fire assistance calls, I don't know, but. I don't know right now warrants any signage, but, um, I don't know, I guess, counsel, if you guys think we wanna go forward with that, or, you know, talk to, just talk to Jim and have him watch it closer.
I would just have Jim watch it and maybe talk to Don, Don, Dollar General about making an entrance and an exit.
Sure, maybe they came to the spring and when they came to the street, that they could do some, something? I don't know, but.
It's, you know, you can go with the subject, they don't have to do it.
No, the other, the other thing is, you know, um, if you do that, then patrolling it, or, you know, how do you stop, you know, it's eight o'clock at night and there's one car on the right, and I'm going around, are they gonna get in trouble for pouring in that south side? I guess, but, you know, unless anybody has a burning desire about doing something else, I think we'd start to have a patrol or, or watch it a little bit more. Casey, what are your thoughts?
Sure, yeah.
I will actually talk to the lady that called me, like, I love to read.
Should I, I, just, do I know what I'm, I'm putting in, um, are you going to, is there gonna be discussion with Dollar General?
Yep, well, we'll, you know, hold it up with General. Tell them they're concerned and we'll see if they, maybe, maybe they've dealt with this, they got fifty thousand stories across the country, so. Maybe they have a, maybe they have a traffic control department, I don't know, so. Okay, moving on. Takes down reports. Water sewer.
Do you not have anything at this time?
Street cemetery.
I have nothing at this time.
Are we still picking up leaves and working on gutters or whatever?
I know, was it last week, Monday, evening, before I went back to subbing again? Uh, we were out pushing leaves out of gutters that morning, I saw them, like, might, that's something likely.
I, I noticed that, but I, I, you know that, uh, by the cross street from Brad's Zirns, there were two big piles of leaves on either side of the gutter. Um, and I don't know if they're just pushing away from, from the, the storm drain. And I don't know if they're just moving away from storm drain, or.
Was it on that, on that there, just like?
It was just, no, I, it's still there today. And I just thought, those two piles, first of all, I can't believe they didn't blow away. But they're still there and, uh, you know, it's, it's just a flood may even happen, so.
Got you, Monty?
Dave did tell me that they're gonna try to start doing some of those storm, cleaning out some of those storm drains and stuff so that they don't have issues. So they're gonna start working on that tomorrow also.
Okay.
They might have just left them there, though.
Okay, possibly.
Does that, does, doesn't that, does that backwatch do that, that stuff up too?
That will, yeah. Uh, finance, Buster.
How am I saying this time?
Just police, fire reports, read.
I have something with the fire department, um, apparently there is a vehicle allowance for either the chief of, uh, fire chief or the assistant chief, and our assistant chief does not have a vehicle at this time. He's using his personal vehicle for calls, and there has been allowance, um, a hundred dollars. Is it per month, right?
Yes.
Yeah, per month, for using his own vehicle. Um, do I need to make a motion in that, or is it just something that?
Yeah, because it will affect their budget.
Okay, and they have requested this?
Yeah.
For Matt LaMasters, yeah.
Yeah, remember the police department, that we had taken two of the police department vehicles and given them to them. As they got older, they got rid of them, so they only have one now, so the assistant chief is using his own vehicle to go to most of these fires.
So I would make that motion to allow that hundred dollar vehicle allowance for the assistant chief.
Okay, thank you, motion by Wolf.
Second, Matt.
Second by Pillar. Discussion. Rule call. Wolf.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Openar.
Aye.
Motion carried.
That is all I have.
Okay. Buster, CD.
Okay. Just wanted to let you know that we have, um, pretty close to having the finer project wrapped up, all of the financial part of what we need to submit has been submitted and accepted. We do have some, uh, a small paper trail, or some other, the, or, um, some of the other things that they need in addition to that, you know, for instance, like, they need to see the contract of, which I thought they had, for the management agency and some of those things, they needed to also get a certified nine-one-one address to show that it is on the books, you know, those kinds of things, so. Uh, I'm thinking that, you know, within a matter of, and I'm hoping by the next time you guys meet, I can say it's all done. Yeah, and so, and the thing about it, the good part about it is, is that, uh, they're still holding, uh, like a hundred and five thousand of, uh, some of that grant money that we originally received, which we will get once everything is completed and they'll release it, and then the intent is, I'm assuming the intent is, because I can't, I'm going to assume the board, the board has to do this and I can't, I'm gonna offer this objection, but I'm thinking most of it's going to probably go in the reserve account. And we, and according to housing and finance regs, there is a certain percentage that we do need to dedicate to reserves per year or so, and, uh, so, uh, so that should be wrapping up pretty soon, and then, uh, being you were talking for Dollar General, uh, I don't know if anybody knows other than Monty, but that property's been sold to a private individual. Yeah.
Is it still being made Dollar General?
Yeah. Yeah. It is, it is somebody that has north foot roots, uh, he and his brother, uh, ended up picking it up, actually, they were in town, uh, a Monday, it'd have been a week ago today, but I happened to be out of town because I had a eye appointment in Mandan, but, so I missed him. I was actually gonna, uh, I didn't realize they were coming to town, I was down the line to them, but, uh, he had called quite a while ago, inquired about it, and, uh, said he liked what he saw, he liked the city, this type of thing, you know, and was disappointed, he came, he comes from a smaller town north of here, uh, and, uh, was disappointed because they elected not to put up Dollar General in their community, so. And, um, to my knowledge, yeah, I don't know, I better, I better, just, I'll just be quiet about that, because that might be, might, might not be true. Because I'm not a hundred percent certain on that. But, uh, so.
Okay.
I guess, uh.
So is the transaction done?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And, uh, he promised to look me up the next time he drove. He's, he's actually from Otis.
And he has her contact info?
Yeah, I have it, yeah, I have his. But he's from, the brother's from Bismarck, and he actually lives in the Denver area. I mean, the, the, the contact.
Interesting.
So, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, um, under my report, I just wanna comment on our special assessment meeting we had today in the large hall. I appreciate all you guys' comments and support for our community and our citizens and for our special assessment board that, uh, has a crummy task at hand with them. And, uh, uh, I, uh, did receive some phone calls this weekend from some very upset citizens about the assessments, and one of them even talked about calling Mr. Donovan for, uh, legal advice. I told them it might be a conflict, they even, however, um, it's, I just reiterated what I said at the meeting the other night, that it's not the most fun situation, but, uh, there's no perfect scenario. So, yeah, thank you. Next month, I'm gonna have Monty, um, put on the rate increase, um, discussion, we need to get that wrapped up for the first year. I want that to take, take effect January one with our rate increases, so if you not had a chance to look at those, uh, please do so. Uh, otherwise, we may just go with what's been recommended, and, uh, I think the last time we talked, we talked about possibly a, a small percentage, and then every year do a slight increase on that instead of every ten years and having to jump there so much every time. So please take a peek at that, if you would. And that's all I have of the report. Down to eleven A. County risk level discussion. I guess, I asked Monty to put this on here, uh, again, uh, we've discussed this in the past. I think that the city of Hazen, I think we need to come up with a statement to our community about a position that we have on COVID. I will not recommend a mandate of any sort. Um, I, I think that, you know, communities are gonna find themselves in a pickle by mandating something, not being able to enforce it. However, um, I would like to see us strongly encourage our community to take a more responsible stance on social distancing and respect for one another. You know, I have been subbing at the middle school quite a bit recently, and, you know, we're, we're seeing a lot happen at the school. And I just, you know, what we, I think generally as a whole, our community, we wanna see our businesses stay open. We wanna see our schools stay open, and we wanna see people healthy. I, I would like to strongly encourage our community to wear masks when they're in public. Uh, I know it's not popular, I just look around in our, this room right now, it's, you know, I have no issue if you're not wearing one, I, I, I think that it's just one of those situations where we will, either way, um, we're hearing people, um, expect to hear something from our, from our city leaders, and, and we have people that, that, if something does come up, they're gonna be furious about it. I guess that's a risk I'm willing to take, um, by just asking people to be more polite and respect other people around them while this, this taking place. No masks do not a hundred percent prevent you from getting sick, you know, we, we've all seen the stuff from the CDC and the State Health Department and Customs Health, um, and I think there's a lot of, um, language out there that is social media, that is inaccurate as well, um, and that comes from both sides of people that like it and people that hate it. If the board is willing to let Monty and I, and with, and Pat come up with a statement for our community, that we can put in the paper and just ask people to just be more respectful and wear, um, things in public, try to be more distant, and our businesses to be more responsible as well. I know a couple businesses that are, their employees are wearing them, and they have signage that says they would recommend customers wearing. I think they're afraid, people, businesses are afraid that they, they, um, demand that people wear them for a lack of people coming into their business. So, um, that's kind of where I'm coming from, and I know we're hearing it from other communities around the state too, that they're, they're coming up with a position statement, um, mandating and as well as, um, and who, who was it that, one of the bigger cities came up? Pandemic statement position. So, what, I, I know I probably caught you off guard with this, but I just, if you have any thoughts of support or opposition to Monty and I and Pat coming up with something? Obviously, you're proving it through, you know, we probably sent it out to you guys to approve it by email, so we can get it to Dan quickly.
And I would be in favor of something like that, as long as we don't mandate that where you have to do the wearing of masks or, you know, because I think most people are being responsible. Like you said, masks aren't a hundred percent, and if you're asymptomatic, it's gonna spread no matter what, whether you're wearing a mask or not. So, I think, I think a lot of people are being responsible. Um, where I, where I've seen, there's a lot of employees wearing them, they're social distancing, they're using their sanitizers. Um, you go out to mostly establishments, they do have their tables separated, um, they can only do so much, though. You know, you go out to the bar, they separate their tables, if people gather, that's, that's a choice that they're making, not the bar owners or the restaurant owners, so, I just, yeah, have people more respectful and following guidelines. That's it.
Casey?
So then I guess if the state's already got, I guess, COVID, I guess, recommendations, I guess, I don't see why that, we gotta come up with our own or whatever.
Well, I don't think you're looking at making recommendations, we're just asking people to
I think.
Follow guidelines.
I think, I think just us as a group, asking them to be, yeah, we're not, I don't wanna go make, make, create the wheel ourselves.
I think there's, I think there's likely with, with many people within the community, uh, a, a desire to see the leadership of the city be involved to, to some extent and show some leadership as it relates to that subject matter, so I think if we just simply support, you know, the, the state and CDC recommendations, and, and just throw a theme out there of respecting one another's positions, you know, whether a person desires to wear a mask or doesn't, you know, we should have a respect for one another.
I don't think it's too much to ask, you know, obviously, we can't enforce it, um, but, you know, I, I did have a person ask, what, what if we walk into the Bison or Jimmy's or Boxers and it's packed every night and it's, you know, you know, we, we can visit with the owners of the establishment, uh, and we, you know, we can, I guess with our county health officer, tell the, the business owner that if there's continued to not have some sort of social distancing or some respect for what's going on, we can close our doors. We do have the authority and power. That's not what I want, at all. Um, that's not what I want at all, but, uh, monetarily, I don't think we can put a monetary fine on it unless we mandate it and create a, an ordinance for that, Pat, is that correct? But I don't wanna go there either, that's not the, but, but I am getting a lot of questions from people, wondering what, how much you can do or what, what a mandate means, and, you know, so. You know, I, I appreciate that, and I actually, um, I would like a motion on doing some of the statements, if we wouldn't mind.
I'd like a motion to approve Monty, Jerry and Pat working together to develop a statement from the leadership of Hazen to be presented to the citizens via, I guess, social media and newspaper.
Thank you. Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Wolf, discussion.
So, Casey, what's still gonna be included in the statement, I mean, I would think all that we gotta say is please, like, all this, like, state of the, you know.
We're not gonna ask Democrats or Republicans to hold hands tomorrow?
You know, like, like Jerry said, I think we'll all have opportunity to see it.
Yep.
And, and, and give a yea or nay type thing on it. I think, I think it's just something that shows that, that we've had some discussions for responding back to citizens' concerns and, and a desire to just understand how the leadership of the city of Hazen is addressing this.
Yeah, and what's the latest you would need that, if we worked on it tomorrow or?
Um, for this week's paper?
Yes.
Yeah, um.
That's great.
Midnight, Friday, or?
It, it would, it would be, it would be best by noon tomorrow.
Okay, okay, I don't know if that's possible, but, um, cause I want everybody to be able to see it soon.
Right.
Uh, so, it might be next week.
And I can look at getting the story out and just shout the discussion points for the.
Sure.
This week's paper.
Okay.
Some of that.
Okay, thank you. All right, inward discussion. Oh, Pat.
I'd just like to add, um, would you ask about what, what you're kind of questioning, why would local do anything differently than the state or what? The point, the purpose of local government is to protect the health, safety, welfare of the citizens, that's how all your ordinances are based on. And so, uh, when the state advocates to the local government and says, we're leaving this up to you guys, and then the local government does nothing, then that's what the citizens do, it's nothing. So I think you're following the right track, and at least coming out of that, certainly more you could do, but that's, uh, at least one step, that's a positive step in letting, reminding the public that we do have some regulations or some recommendations to you, and we continue to ignore those, and we continue to see the results in time too. Anyway, so I, I think, I agree that this is a good thing.
Thank you. Inward discussion. Roll call.
Hiller. Aye. Wolf.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hobenhour.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. Bring this to the end of the agenda. Approval bill, please.
Motion approved.
Motion by Pat.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, discussion. Um, I'm sorry if we go, Ken, did you have anything for us, I'm sorry?
I have one thing, a, a request of, uh, for Peace Lutheran Church on a parking lot repair that we're still planning on doing next summer. There's gonna be some investigation review, a, a sewer line video on that sanitary sewer to see if, determine if there was any replacement the city wanted to do or leave it as is, and, uh, I'm waiting for an answer on that particular question.
Okay, and we don't have an answer for you tonight, but, uh, obviously, when are you, are you guys gonna have a camera, your portion, or?
No, not, not that, uh, there's only the service lines that are owned by the church.
Okay.
It's the main, and that's the area that, uh, is in question. I, I questioned anyway. Because of previous video from one of the sewer lines showed water sitting in the main, and generally, if the main's in good shape, you wouldn't have water sitting in there.
Okay, yeah.
And, uh, I.
Did you, so you wanna do this project in the spring, but we need to know, we need our investigation done about the main, so in case you wanted, once it's torn out, we do it when it's torn out.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, I wish Dave was here, do we have Casey? Cause I'm wondering if we had any, any schedule for camera work.
Well, we've got a whole video on it, so we'd have to start with that.
Yeah, and then too, I guess, you know, I thought that the only kind of work that needed, that needed, I guess, all to be done was the work that was already done now during this last, I guess, a street project over there.
You mean on the west side of the building?
This is strictly on private property on the west side of the building. On the west side of the church building.
Yeah, clear.
The only part, and let me correct that, the only part that's not on, uh, church property is the sidewalk on the west side of Central Avenue. Uh, just from that last driveway, coming up to that curb, that, that curving is gonna be taken out and replaced, and that's gonna be lowered. That sidewalk right now is, I, I can't remember the numbers, but it's way, it's too steep for handicapped accessible. I'm not certain, but I recall that the city ordinances state that sidewalks in residential areas have to be one foot into the boulevard from the property line. So you may, maybe wanna give an opinion on that, because the present sidewalk that's there is right tight against the property line, as far as I can tell. But that was in the scope of where that your engineering review on that replacing that.
No.
Thirty feet of sidewalk.
No. Okay. Well, and to make that ADA compliant on, on the elevation, you'd have to start back quite a ways, wouldn't you, to start the, the incline of the?
Uh, I think at the driveway, the north side of that residential driveway, going up to the new elevation of the curb, it will meet.
Oh, wow.
ADA, but that is not the church's concern really, that has to be the city's concern, because that is on city boulevard.
Right, and you guys are gonna be redoing the west side, there, from the north end of your church all the way around the end of church, right?
Correct, yeah, where we tie down into, and if you drive up there, you'll see that in this last street project, there was part of a, the arc of new concrete placed in the gutter, we will tie into the north end of that new concrete.
Okay. All right, we will start, we'll, we will get on that then.
Okay.
Yep, thanks for the reminder, appreciate that one.
One, one other question.
Yes, sir.
And it's related to the city limit deal, I have forwarded to Monty and to Pat to meet, meet some balanced description of the city limits. I don't know when you folks are gonna redo it, if you're satisfied with it, it's, it's pretty lengthy, because I found, I think, every, every call on the, on the description.
Yeah, we'll do the first reading, cause it's basically a change of our argument, so we'll do the first reading at the next meeting, so they have a chance to review it.
Okay.
Okay. Great, thanks, Ken.
Yeah.
All right, now, meeting adjourned.
No.
No. Oh, that's right, we, we, we're tired, off the. Okay, we need a motion for bills. And we have discussion. And we roll.
Pat.
Wolf.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hobenhour.
Aye, motion carried, thank you, guys.